Hey, you're recording, Mayor?
All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on April 6th, 2022, and I'm going to call the City Council's study session to order. If you will all please rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And then a quick roll call. Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilman Owen?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Allen? Okay. Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
And Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
All right. So we're going to start this evening with the possibility of utility easement, 405 Alexander Puget Sound Energy. And Mr. Freiburger, good evening. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. So this is pretty much just a bookkeeping item. The new power service to the Public Works Building out on Alexander Street or down on Alexander Street required PSE to run a new underground service from their pole that's adjacent to the wastewater plant to the transformer location. And because of the improvements that are on the edge of the right of way, the only way they could do it was on city property. And so we're granting them, or this request is to grant them, a 10-foot utility easement along the north edge of the property so they can put their service in place. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to deal with that.
Any questions at all for Mr. Freiburger? Okay. And you're looking for a motion tonight?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
All right. So do we have a motion to authorize Mayor Johnson to execute the attached easement with the Puget Sound Energy for Power Service to the new Public Works Building at 405 Alexander Seadrill Woolley?
Yeah. A motion to authorize that. I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carries. Second item tonight is Resolution 109022, Section 218 of the referendum for firefighters. Nikki and Charlie, and also Melanie. Welcome, Melanie, from the state of Washington. She's with the State Social Service Department, and they will be presenting this.
Mayor, could I interrupt just one second, please?
Yes.
So I understand you might be gone tomorrow. That is a very time-sensitive thing, so if we could get your signature on that easement tonight or first thing in the morning, whatever works for you.
I will be here all day tomorrow.
You will?
I will. Yeah, I'm taking off Friday morning, but I'll gladly check in with you in the morning and get that done.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Back to you, Charlie, or Nikki?
Absolutely. I'll go ahead and kick it off, maybe kick it to Nikki, and hopefully Melanie's out there from the state as well. So we received a request from our firefighters, from the union, to have the opportunity to consider opting out of Social Security. And that was a new one for us, to receive that request, but I understand other firefighters have done that in parts of Washington. So we followed up, followed up with Nikki and with the state, and we got in touch with the right person at the state. And indeed, there is a process for that. And rather than try to describe that myself, I'm going to turn it over to the experts to help with that.
All right. So Melanie, hello. Will that be you? Or Nikki, are you going to introduce this?
Well, I'm going to hope that Melanie is on the line.
She is.
Fabulous, because I think that her understanding is much deeper than Charlie's and mine.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Melanie Pacine. I work for the Washington State Department of Retirement Systems, and it's my pleasure to be here. The reason that I'm here, kind of, is because I made a mistake 10 years ago, in 2012. So let me backtrack this a little bit. Okay, so I work for the Department of Retirement Systems, and the Washington State Department of Retirement Systems is the state social security liaison between the federal government and the public employers in the state of Washington. My job, my title, is State Social Security Coordinator. I started in this job in September 2009, and there's an awful lot to know about the topic of voluntary social security coverage for public employers. And in 2012, there was a little tiny thing that I was unaware of, and it's a very, kind of a complicated and intricate subject. So Social Security, you know, started in 1935 when SDR signed it into law, 1937, the first taxes were withheld, the first benefits were paid out. Eighty-six years of Social Security we have. So it's a long history and changes that have happened over time. It wasn't until 1951 that any public employer in the state of Washington or in the United States could participate in Social Security. And it was determined that it would be done on a voluntary basis. And so Section 218 of the Social Security Act was passed, and that became effective in 1951. Over time, you know, things, certain things have changed, but the nuance, I'm going to cut to the chase here, the nuance that I missed was, and social, and coverage, social security coverage for firefighters and police officers is different. It's a little bit different than it is for everybody else. In 2012, I was asked, are the firefighters employed by the city of Seadrill Woolley, are they subject to Social Security or not? I incorrectly said that they were subject to Social Security. And then in 2021, or recently, I was asked again about the possibility of Seadrill Woolley opting out of Social Security for their firefighters to do that. And when I was re, you know, looking at the file, I realized that I made a mistake. In 2012, I said that the firefighters were subject to Social Security. I was incorrect. They were not. Now, to explain why, I can explain why. And again, there's a lot, there's a lot to this, but in 1951, when the voluntary coverage was authorized, it did not, a public entity could not extend voluntary Social Security coverage to a public employer or to any of the employees if they were participants in a public retirement system. Now, I thought that that meant, number one, I didn't think that volunteer firefighters were considered employees. I was wrong. For purposes of Section 218, for purposes of voluntary Social Security coverage, volunteer firefighters are considered employees. The second thing I missed, and that I now know, is that the Board for Volunteer Firefighters, that pension plan, that counts as a public retirement plan. And if the firefighters were participating in the voluntary, the volunteer Board for Firefighters Plan, when this coverage was obtained, when the voluntary coverage was obtained for the city, it would have exempted the firefighters. So I missed two key things. Number one, I didn't realize that volunteer firefighters were considered employees. They are, for Section 218. And number two, I didn't realize that the Board for Volunteer Firefighters, that pension plan counted as a public pension plan to exempt a group of employees from voluntary Social Security. So, and I sent a timeline, I don't know if, I didn't know, I don't know how deep everybody wants to get into this, I wasn't really sure how much I should go into this, but the point is, and I'm 100% correct now, in fact, I'll be president of the association that, of all the states that deal with this across the US. So I've learned a little bit since then, but I totally was wrong and made a mistake. So here we are, 2022, and I had the super fun job of telling everybody that I made a mistake and also letting Seadrill Woolley know that now what needs to happen, this is what needs to happen, and this is why you're being asked to sign this resolution. This is the gist of it. The firefighters at your city are now going to have the opportunity, and this is what you're authorizing. You're authorizing your firefighters to vote on whether they would like to continue paying into Social Security or whether they would like to stop, because they've been paying in erroneously, is what has happened. And if they vote to participate, and, oh, and it's a, it's a majority vote referendum, and so, you know, just one vote either way can make the difference. So if there's, you know, 25 voters, then 13 have to vote yes in order for this to pass. And so I'm going to help the city conduct this majority vote referendum. And, but it can't happen unless you, the council, authorize the holding of that referendum. And I've conducted over 100 of these already, so I'm unlikely to mess that up. So that's what we're asking you to do, is authorize the holding of this majority vote referendum. And then if it passes, like I said, they'll continue to pay in. If it fails, if it doesn't pass, then the firefighters in left, who are in the law enforcement officers and firefighters retirement system, they will get a refund of Social Security taxes back to 2019, is what will happen. And that's super fun for the payroll HR people who get to deal with that and refund that money and do corrected 941s and issue W-2Cs. So sorry about that if it doesn't pass. But that is basically, without going in too much detail and putting everybody to sleep, that's what we're asking you to do, is authorize the holding of this majority vote referendum for your firefighters who are participants in left.
All right. Thank you, Melanie. And I appreciate your transparency. I don't know how many people would actually say I made a mistake, so, but I thought that that was quite clear, but I am going to put this out to the council and see if they have any questions regarding what Melanie has shared. Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Melanie, I was just wondering exactly who is asking for that to come about as a vote? And it goes to 2019. What about the funds they've already put in? I'm sure that was in my packet, but I have that down.
Yep. The funds that were, that have been paid into, the taxes that have been paid into prior to 2019 will remain on the books. They cannot be removed. The money cannot be refunded, and the credits cannot be taken away, even if it was incorrect. And I believe one of the firefighters, or maybe the union, somebody inquired about it, then the question came to me, and then I, you know, determined that I did it wrong. So what happens is that, basically, usually the employees will go to the employer and say, hey, can we, would you authorize the holding of a referendum? Which we do that all the time for employers that don't have voluntary Social Security coverage in place.
So the rest of it that they've been paying in for however long they've been employed would go to them upon their retirement? Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And part of this process will be, the Social Security Administration will provide information. There will be a, there will be a presentation. I will participate, I will spend about a half an hour on the history of Social Security, putting everybody to sleep. And then the person that they'll really want to hear from is my colleague at the Social Security Administration. His name is Kirk Larson. He's an excellent presenter, and he will talk to them about Social Security. He won't push it, he won't, he'll have no opinion on it, but he will give them an excellent presentation about the program, how it works, and he'll let them know what would happen if they opt out. He'll, and he'll take questions individually, he'll help them individually if they want to know how they would be impacted personally. So there's a 90-day period from the time that you authorize the referendum and the time that we actually hold it, there has to be at least 90 days in that, between those two things. And that is to give us time to let them think about it, to present information to them, so I can tell them myself that I made a mistake. And so we try to provide as much information as we can so that they can vote in a way that'll be best for them individually. And it's an anonymous vote, so none of them will know how the other people are voting. But I'll just warn you, it can get contentious between them.
And who is asking for this specific vote to come about?
Yeah, I can cover that. So the union directly requested that we consider this.
Thank you so much, Melanie.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for me? No, that looks like the, oh, hello?
I'm sorry, I just woke up, so I'm awake.
No worries. Welcome, welcome, Glenn. Go ahead, you have a question?
I do. What kind of cost is this going to incur on our taxpayers and the city?
Zero.
She said zero. None, none.
No additional costs, there's nothing?
You know, I don't quite under, I'm on Social Security, and I don't quite understand why a system that's been around since 1937 and initiated in 1951 is too passe or too antiquated now for the firefighters to retain it. So maybe enlighten me. You kind of confused me with all your, you know, going back in history, but I don't understand what's been going on for 70-some years is now no longer relevant, if you can enlighten me on that.
Certainly. It's not that it's no longer relevant. It's Social Security, here's the thing, in 1935, when Social Security was enacted, there was a question of constitutionality. Is it or was it constitutional for the federal government to tax state and local governments? And the answer was no. That was the decision. So in 1950, Congress made a decision to make it voluntary on the part of the states to determine if each state could make the decision, do we want to allow some or all of our public entities to participate in Social Security? And if they do, it will be on a voluntary basis. Now, I wasn't sure, you know, I have like a 20-minute, 25-minute presentation, but I just didn't, with the whole, the history and all of this, but I didn't know, you know, I just didn't know if anybody would be interested in that. But that's, so that's the thing, is that a governmental employee couldn't even participate in, and it was a constitutional thing. Can the federal government tax state and local governments? So then, and again, this has changed over time, so it was strictly voluntary, strictly voluntary. Then, okay, that was 1951. 1991, 40 years later, 1991, Congress passed yet another law that said, if you're a public employee, a state and local government employee, you will be mandated into paying Social Security unless you are a participant in a public retirement plan. And so, you know, today, there are, and this coverage, every state is different. Let me explain. So in the state of Michigan, about 99% of public employees pay into Social Security. In the state of Ohio, one public employer pays into Social Security, one, and that's the Toledo Mudheads. It's a baseball team that pays in. So every single state is different. In the state of Washington, it's mostly firefighters that don't pay in. All of the state agencies are covered, except for the state troopers. All of the higher education entities are covered. And then, and then between cities and towns and other types of districts, it just varies. It varies all over the place. Some, the city of Lakewood, the city of Lakewood employees do not pay into Social Security unless they are, unless the employee doesn't participate in a retirement plan. So even in Washington, there are cities and entities that don't pay into Social Security today. So, you know, you figure if it's been around for 80-some years, laws are going to change, attitudes are going to change, so Social Security is not, it's not passe, it's not antiquated or anything, but, and it still exists, it's just that public employers don't have to participate if they don't want to. Most public employers in Washington opted in back in 19, in the 1950s. So that's where a lot of it, you know, a lot of people today, and a lot of people like myself before I started working in this program, didn't even know that some people didn't have to pay into Social Security. So it's going to come down to, you know, if you approve the vote, it's going to, it's going to come down to that, to the vote. I can, let me just forewarn you as the council, that I wouldn't be surprised if the union comes to you and says, can we negotiate? Can we, if we say no to Social Security, will you give us something else instead of it? So I just want to put that out there and just give you a heads up, that I've seen that happen many times with the union. They'll go to the employer and they'll say, hey, you're paying 6.25% in for us for Social Security. Why don't you put in 5% into something else for us? Or something like that. So I would not be surprised if you are approached with a negotiation on the question. Just a heads up.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie.
I don't know if I answered your question or not. That was kind of broad. I don't know, but.
Okay. So, Councilman Diamond?
I'm sorry, I just have a quick question. We have, we have full-time, part-time, and volunteers, and some are union, some are not. Does that affect all entities or just strictly the people that are considered union?
Yeah, this affects, we believe, eight, I'm sorry, 11 people. The eight people who are in the union who are full-time firefighters, and then the three chiefs as well, the chief and the two assistant chiefs, not the part-time employees, not the volunteers.
Okay.
Specifically, the group that we're voting are the members of the law enforcement officers and firefighters retirement system, left. It's the left members who are firefighters. That's who will be asked to vote.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? Okay. So is there anything else that either Charlie, you, or Nikki would like to add?
I just wanted to clarify a little bit. We wrote in the agenda cover memo, and I added this piece in, that there may be a small fiscal impact from this. It's not from the ongoing sense, but we have been looking at the possibility of getting some temporary assistance for payroll for processing this. As we get a better feel for the amount of work involved if the firefighters decide to opt out, we just want to make sure we've got staff to cover that. We've got that well within the budget. We're not asking for additional money or anything, but just wanted to be fully transparent on that topic.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
If I could ask, Charlie, has any of the unions approached you on renegotiating the retirement, volunteer retirement plan?
The, I'm sorry, the voluntary retirement?
What she was talking about of having the secondary retirement, if they're not doing the Social Security, then there's the possibility.
This is the only request we've received at this point, and I'm not sure that there are any other unions that would actually be eligible for this type of benefit. Yeah. And Melanie may know. Melanie, I'm not sure, you probably comment on that.
Are you talking about Seadrill Woolley people only, or?
Yeah, just the one that requested to have this put for a vote.
Right. This, everybody else, this does not impact anybody else but those firefighters who are enrolled in left. That is it. It only impacts them.
Melanie, could you speak to, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, can you speak to, is there an option for police as well?
No. I am 100% sure in 2012 and now in 2022, I am 100% sure that the police are covered. 100% sure.
That covers all of our left employees. It's fire and police.
Only police, not fire. Yeah.
Okay. So we are looking for a vote, and the question is, should the city adopt Resolution 1090-22, sending the members of the law enforcement officers and firefighters a referendum to determine whether or not to continue with Social Security or whether to opt out?
I'll put a motion forward for them to be able to make that choice themselves.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. So we had a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Melanie, for your time and for the explanation, the detailed explanation. We appreciate you stepping in today and making those, answering our questions and making the situation clear.
Great. Thank you. I hope I haven't made it more confusing. If anybody has any question, my email is available, and I'm happy to answer anything that you, any questions that anyone may have.
Oh, appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Moving on to the last item for tonight, and that is the contract award for the 2022 Classification and Compensation Study. And I believe this is you, Charlie?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I'll start with saying there are really three action options on this. We wrote it up for action tonight. That would be our recommended course. And the reason for that is getting this study done soon is going to be beneficial to the city in terms of putting together our 2324 budget, because that budget development process really starts in the next few months, carries through the summer into the fall, and gets presented to you in the fall. So it's going to be helpful to have that information sooner than later. However, you could certainly delay action on this tonight if you so choose, and take it up at another meeting or consider it a little bit longer, or you could reject and we could redo the request for proposals that we put together. The latter option would put us back about four to six weeks. That would put us really close to the deadline we have. And so I just wanted to provide those options upfront. My apologies for not writing those in the memo. I was deep in the details of describing exactly kind of what process we went through and why. And I'll share with you a high-level version of that here for the next few minutes, but I just wanted to start with those options. So why did we do this, or why are we doing this? So it's a good practice, it's a best practice, every three to five years to look at classification and compensation for employees. And that's according to the Society for Human Resource Management, which is really the bellwether professional organization that oversees human resources professionals. So that's a normal thing to do. In 2017, we did a study like this for our AFSMI employees as well as for our nonrepresented employees. That was five years ago, so this would be five years later, looking to do a combined study with both groups. Our AFSMI contract that was approved by council in November this past year has a provision in it, and I quoted it actually in the memo, that requires the city to engage in a classification and compensation study with an independent consultant. So with that in mind, and that charge, and that contract requirement, and we have to have it done by the end of October of this year, I set off on the job of procuring a consultant to help us with this work. And given the nature or the size of this particular effort, we knew it was going to be $50,000 to $100,000. We went
I'll put a motion forward for them to be able to make that choice themselves.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. So we had a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, Melanie, for your time and for the explanation, the detailed explanation. We appreciate you stepping in today and making those, answering our questions and making the situation clear.
Great, thank you. I hope I haven't made it more confusing. If anybody has any question, my email is available, and I'm happy to answer anything that you, any questions that anyone may have.
Oh, appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Moving on to the last item for tonight, and that is the contract award for the 2022 Classification and Compensation Study. And I believe this is you, Charlie.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson. I'll start with saying, there are really three action options on this. We wrote it up for action tonight. That would be our recommended course. And the reason for that is, getting this study done soon is going to be beneficial to the city in terms of putting together our 2324 budget, because that budget development process really starts in the next few months, carries through the summer into the fall, and gets presented to you in the fall. So it's going to be helpful to have that information sooner than later. However, you could certainly delay action on this tonight if you so choose, and take it up at another meeting, or consider it a little bit longer, or you could reject, and we could redo the request for proposals that we put together. The latter option would put us back about four to six weeks. That would put us really close to the deadline we have. And so I just wanted to provide those options upfront. My apologies for not writing those in the memo. I was deep in the details of describing exactly kind of what, what process we went through and why. And I'll, I'll share with you a high-level version of that here for the next few minutes, but I just wanted to start with those options. So why did we do this, or why are we doing this? So it's a good practice, it's a best practice, every three to five years to look at classification and compensation for employees. And that's according to the Society for Human Resource Management, which is really the bellwether professional organization that oversees human resources professionals. So that's a normal thing to do. In 2017, we did a study like this for our AFSMI employees, as well as for our nonrepresented employees. That was five years ago, so this would be five years later, looking to do a combined study with both groups. Our AFSMI contract that was approved by council in November this past year has a provision in it, and I quoted it actually in the memo, that requires the city to engage in a classification and compensation study with an independent consultant. So with that in mind, and that charge, and that contract requirement, and we have to have it done by the end of October of this year, I set off on the, on the job of procuring a consultant to help us with this work. And given the nature or the size of this particular effort, we knew it was going to be $50,000 to $100,000. We went, we followed the city's procurement policies, went with a request for proposals. We went to the Municipal Research Services Center Rosters Program, which MRSC is, as you all know, a great resource for all of us in local government. They have a rosters program where you can go through consultants that are listed there, and it's a key part of the way we do procurement in the city. And we sent this to every HR consultant who does work in this area, 15 of them roughly. And so we, we got it out to a broad base of folks, we put it on the website as well. We, we received information from three firms. The one firm that we're recommending, class, compensation connections, it's a mouthful, they were fully responsive to what we put out there. We had another one that came in a day late, and that was unfortunate. And we had another one that came in but did not meet the timeline that we had in the request for proposals. So I included in your packet the request for proposals, as well as compensation connections response. And so you've got details, well, as an example contract, which was in the RFP as well. So that's a little bit of the background. And as I mentioned, we're trying to stay on, we've got kind of a tight timeline, but we could, we have just enough time to do this again if we were so inclined. That said, we'd likely be sending it to the same firms. And now folks know that we at least have one proposal and what the price was, so it's possible we could see the prices go up if we were to go back and do it. So we're requesting moving forward. I will tell you, with this particular firm, they were very responsive to what we asked them to do. And we can see that all the way through the way they wrote this. And I have briefly emailed with them, so they, they know that we're considering the contract tonight. They had references listed in their response, and I checked with a couple of those references. I heard back from one. It was a very positive conversation that I had with them about the work that they did, very similar to what we're looking to do. So what we're looking to do is, first off, we've got 25 AFSMI positions and 20 nonrepresented positions, where we're looking to do the classification work first, which is getting the job descriptions just right, and making sure that they are compliant with the state and federal laws. So that process is done very effectively with, with technical expertise, and these folks do this work all the time. So they will go through, they'll do questionnaires, they'll do interviews, they'll talk with managers, they'll talk with employees, and they will do their very best to get those positions just right. And we'll, we'll be working with the union collaboratively through this process as well. Once those, we all agree those positions are looking good, then we'll study the pay for those positions, and we'll be looking, they'll be looking at the pay for those positions, and they'll be looking at comparable organizations and what they would pay. The reason why this is all important is, one, to stay compliant legally with, make sure our positions are following all those laws, but also to keep up with the market. And doing that is really critical. As you know, the market is, we're in a period known as the Great Resignation. We've, we've got a labor shortage across, we've got, I think, eight positions listed on the city's website the last time I looked. We've got more vacant positions than that. Some of those are duplicate vacancies, like part-time firefighters. We could hire a bunch of those right now if we could find them. So there's, there's a lot going on in the market. The more that we can do to stay competitive, the better off we're going to be in the long run. And that's one factor that will affect how many applicants you get for a job. So we're obligated to do this by October 30th. We're recommending we go with this firm, and we do have other options if, if the council is so inclined. So that's my presentation for now.
I just have one, one thought, that's something that actually you and I, and I think probably you and Nikki discussed as well, I'm not sure, but if we go out again, you said that we do have time, however, I'm concerned about the budget, because we will have to have the exact pay of each employee before we can come up with a comprehensive and final budget. That's a real push. What are your thoughts on that?
I am always a proponent of budgeting earlier rather than later. I don't like being up against the 11th hour. And when you're talking about labor costs, they tend to run about 60 to 70% of any city budget. So these employees aren't, aren't all of our employees, and we're not studying every position, police and fire, those negotiations will be going on this year as well. That's a whole separate discussion. But it is a significant cost factor in our budget. So the sooner we can know what those costs are going to be, the better off we're going to be in terms of putting it all together.
So I know that we're required by contract for a third party for the union employees. So I completely understand that, on, on board with that. My concern is the additional 20 nonrepresentatives and the amount of cost that is going into that. If we could do just the union employees and handle the nonrepresentatives internally, is that an option to save costs there? $93,000 is just, seems incredibly extensive to me, and every company that I've worked for or done, obviously, non-union has always had it handled internally, you know, making phone calls, talking to other people, you know, doing that. I realize that that requires somebody here to do that, but is that an option?
It would be difficult to execute internally without an HR function. It would, it would more or less fall on me to do that work, and that would mean I'd have to push some other things off my plate, for sure. So I would say it's, it's not a great option. I would maybe look at, if we split them out, doing, maybe doing a separate contract with somebody to, to look at nonrepresentatives would be my recommendation if we were to do that. But that said, I think we're going to end up probably paying more if you were to combine those two contracts together. I think it makes a lot of sense, because we're doing the exact same work to have one firm do it. The other thing I would add is the technical expertise for doing this work well is, I just talked with an HR professional the other day. HR professionals do this work now and again, and, and they can do it pretty well, but for people who do it all the time, they're much more proficient at it, just like you would be at anything. So I wouldn't recommend splitting it out. We've handled it this way in the past, and we'll be, we're already five years out on the nonrepresented employees, so we'll be further out into the future. But could we do it internally? Probably very slowly. The other thing I'd mention that's important is treating our employees the same across the board, whether they're unionized or not unionized, makes a difference, because in the state of Washington, unions can form whenever they want to. So one of the things we have to be careful about is, if we don't treat our nonrepresented employees as well as our union employees, we may find we have another union down the road. So we'd want to make sure we did a really good job of that. We don't have the technical expertise internally right now to do that as well as these folks do that we'd be hiring.
Okay. So if we thought that we needed to go back and renegotiate, or send it back out to bid, simply because the bid is high, and possibly allow a few other people to throw their names in the hat, I realize that that could be a time crunch. Is that an option in and of itself, just for a better bid?
It is.
Because it sounds like there are more people available.
You have an option to go back out always, but in this particular case, we're looking at completion by mid-July. So if you back that up four to six weeks, then we're looking at, may possibly early September, it depends on maybe late August, but somewhere in that range. That puts the budget in a really tough spot. So it is possible, but it is going to be technically difficult to execute. Quite difficult.
Okay.
I wouldn't recommend it.
No.
Yeah, but I understand the concern.
Sure. So in a contract, just, if, but if it was to go over, over that timeline, wouldn't that just be, wouldn't their wages just be retroacted?
Well, the, the, there are two deadlines, actually, that I'm thinking about. The deadline I was speaking to more was the budget itself, which Debbie's not here, but my recollection is state law requires us to present the budget to you somewhere around end of September.
Okay.
So we have to have that data sometime in August, sometime in early September, and then balance the budget based on what we know. And, and I should add, we also have to bargain the impacts of this with the union. So we have to go back to AFSMI, and that's part of the, the contract, and then figure out how we're going to implement it. So that piece could take a little bit of time as well. So I'm just concerned about the crunching of time that occurs as, as we get into August, September. Technically possible, yes, but very difficult to execute. And, and if anything delays us, we, we could be out of compliance. The other issue is, then the contract, this itself, the, the contract actually that we have at AFSMI, requires us to have this, all this work done by the end of October. So that's the other deadline. We could easily, we could meet that deadline, but it's the budget deadline that concerns me at that point.
So Councilwoman Kestie, did you have a question, or was your question answered?
It was pretty much answered through Sarah's, and I, I feel the exact same way. I look at it, that the 25 union for the AFSMI, you know, theirs is, if we're contractually obligated to do theirs, then do that, but $93,000, I think, is completely outrageous, and I don't feel comfortable spending taxpayer money like that, especially when some of it could be done in-house, just with some reorganizing.
Would you like to take a guess at the overtime you'd be looking at to do that internally?
Well, we don't have the technical skills to do it internally, other than me. I don't cost you overtime, but the reality is, there's stuff like the business development work, or economic development we have with, we've got a piece with ARPA that we're going to be working on that's on my plate, that I'm going to have to find some other way to, there's only so much time in, in the day, in the weekend, and the nights and the holidays to, to find, so that's the challenge. And I don't have, I haven't done one of these myself either. I don't have the technical expertise either to do it. If we had an HR professional on staff, we'd have a lot more to fall back on.
It's a disadvantage of not having an HR in this situation. Anybody else? Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Charlie, would it be possible to push that same contract out for two weeks to the other bidders like Sarah proposed to see, or to get clarity, clarity on the, the little bit over $2,000 per contract? And I understand that you got to go out and touch base with not only the employer and the employee, but also the general field, but I'm just curious on like, what their hourly rate would be at that per employee, and if they're proficient at it, that would mean that they would be able to get it done a little bit sooner. It does seem a little high at that rate. And I've, I've actually done those before, not to the professional HR position type, but reaching out, trying to find out what the common wages are, and trying to understand a little bit more about job description, informing that correctly, so that way it fits the general field consistently. And it is time-consuming, I do, I do admit that, but it does seem kind of high. So if there's other, you said that we got one result back, and you reached out to, to seven, I believe, seven or eight, would we be able to get the time for the others to respond?
Yeah, it's, it's a bit of a procurement question. I asked Nikki to stick around. So Nikki, if you're still out there, if you'd like to kind of weigh in on that, given that we've done an RFP, that would be helpful.
So we did an RFP, and when we did the RFP, that had a specific deadline for the proposals. And the RFP was very specific in the amount of time that the project had to be done in. So technically, we got three quote responses. However, only one of them was truly responsive to the RFP, because one of them came in a day late, so that's past the deadline when the proposals were opened. And the other had a timeframe that was a month beyond what we said our timeframe was. So the other two responses were technically non-responsive to our request for proposal. So we wouldn't be able to extend our old RFP, we would have to put a new RFP out. So that would mean sending an RFP that was similar to the last one out again to the consultants on the MRSC roster, posting on the website, and wherever else we posted, and seeking, you know, possibly an even more condensed timeline than the one we already sought. Because Charlie's very correct that we do have to not only obtain the data, but we have to negotiate what the data means with the union. And then having that done before you all have to pass a budget is going to be quite a tight, tight timeline.
Thank you, Nikki. Out of curiosity, what was the second one that was one day late?
Yeah, I don't remember the name of the firm.
Not, not the firm, but the amount.
The amount? I didn't even open the one that came in late, so I can't tell you that. There was another firm that came in on time, where the timeline didn't add up, and that particular one was, was significantly less than this one, about half the amount.
Would, would it be prudent, or, or at least wise, to open up that second one, just to see what those, because that one that came in late, obviously, we can't trust that they would deliver for you in the first place, but one day late, at least we get a good idea on, maybe it's worth waiting that two to four, four to six weeks to put it out there and increase our timeline for them to get it done, and then that would maybe save a significantly lot, depending on what that costs.
Yeah, I think certainly we can open the other one. I didn't do that just to sort of, for the sanctity of the process itself, but in terms of going back and negotiating with somebody we've, we've deemed as non-responsive, I don't think we have the legal option to do that. Nikki, I defer to you on that again, because our process is very well-defined.
We have to follow our defined process, our defined procurement process, and, and that was a non-responsive, non-responsive bid, basically.
Was that a process that we developed? Or is that through the, through ordinance or the MRSC?
Yeah, we have a procurement policy that the city's adopted, the council has adopted, so we went straight to that manual and followed that.
So the, so the bottom line is that we have to do this. We absolutely have to do this, correct?
We, what we absolutely have to do for certain is, we have to do, to stay consistent with our contract, a classification and compensation study with an independent consultant for our AFSMI employees. We're recommending that we also include our nonrepresented employees in that. The timing is such that it would be very helpful if we were to move forward with the way we have things lined up, but the council does have options at this point.
They do. But we do have the money.
We do have the money.
We do have the money.
I'm sorry. Can we not ratify this contract and put it out for bid for like, a month or something at this point?
Yes, you can reject all bids.
For rebid.
You can reject all bids.
Can we reject this?
You, you can.
Proposal, okay. Thank you.
But would that allow that one that was disqualified from rebidding? Is that how I interpreted Nikki saying that, that they would not be able to rebid?
No, no, I, unless, Nikki, unless I missed something, no, everybody could rebid at that point.
Well, yeah, that's.
Yes.
And if they were only doing the, the 25 that are actually under, what's it called? Contract, they would have, maybe some of those other people would be able to do it, because it's not so large, it's smaller, so.
What I would recommend we do if we did put it out again would be to, to split it out, so that we can get a really clear cost estimate for both groups of employees.
I would recommend, or follow that recommendation to, to kind of keep them together and do both, because it, it is time-consuming. If you could do it all in the same, then you know that the language is going to be the same, the report's going to be the same, and the company's going to be the same, if possible. So, but I'm curious to see if that one that didn't get opened, if, if it's 35% lower, maybe even, you know, 40%, it could be.
Charlie, I'd like to say a few words, if I can. You and I had a discussion earlier, and, you know, about three, maybe four years ago, we had a in-house discussion about this stuff. And Aaron Berg gave us a printout of, of all the cities that compared to Cedro Woolley, the classifications and compensations, and Cedro Woolley made an adjustment, and it was quite an adjustment. I don't see any reason why this present administration here can't, can't get a printout of all these cities and adjust to the cities' size of Cedro Woolley without paying $90,000 of taxpayers' money, just to have a group come in and, and do the same, basically the same thing. They're going to, they're going to check, check these other cities, and, and they're going to adjust. You can do that, very simple. I just can't see paying the taxpayers' money out to have this little study done when, when it can be done, or simply. So I'm, I'm not ready to, to vote on anything like this. If I did, I, I wouldn't approve it. We need more time to, to look into this thing, and there is other options, and other ways to go. I'm looking out for the taxpayers, and I'm sure a lot of them wouldn't approve of this. I recommend that we, we don't do anything with this thing now, and, and do a lot more thinking and discussing, and, before we make any decisions. But it can be done. In fact, it's very easy to get a printout.
Am I understanding correctly, Charlie, that we would have to have an independent agency do that printout, if that's what they were doing? And then also, if we take no action on it, such as table it until the next session or whatnot, and then vote on it, does that just delay the four to six weeks that would, would take for that procurement to take place? Or should we just reject it now, put out that, or approve it now, whichever the council decides to do? And then? decides to do in the vote? And then, and then you'll, you'll know the course of action, so we can immediately start going that direction?
Yeah. Any kind of clear direction would be helpful tonight. I can tell the council has a number of different opinions on it. What would be most helpful is, we're recommending approval, but if you chose not to approve, if you reject it all, and we could go back out, that would be more helpful than waiting, because we don't know how long we'd be waiting for. And you're right on, that deadline of October 30th isn't moving. It's just sitting there. So we're just going to get one week closer to it.
I would like to, personally, I would like to see, see it rejected, come back, and go out, so we can get things moving as quickly as possible. But to see the bid come in for the 25 and the 20, can we, are we able to request that separately, so that maybe if a firm can come in and they want to combine it, and they can give a good deal for it, that we can go ahead and do that? But we can see that, see them line item separately?
Yes, we're able to do that.
And then, and then we have our options.
We are able to do that.
I second that.
Councilman McGoffin?
I would just like to kind of confirm that, too. I agree, it'd be nice to see that split out, just to know the cost difference. I have received a lot of public comment in the last couple of years about the non-represented employees and their pay. And so I would feel more comfortable setting pay based off a third-party agency doing it, rather than an internal, because I think setting your pay internally, it's subjective, whereas someone that knows the field and can do a good data analysis on that, I would feel better setting people's pay and explaining that to the public, that this is, this pay because we did an independent study, and this is what the competitive pay for this position is. And secondarily, or second, it is a competitive market, and I want to make sure that we have the right pay for people. And I think having a third-party person tell us what the competitive rate is versus somebody internally doing that is the right way to go. But I would like to see it broken out. It's unfortunate that that one was one day late, because it's hard to make a decision with just one price, especially if that other one was a lot lower, but it didn't follow the instructions, so.
Would you be able to clarify that point to the people that we resend the bid out to? Or let them know, hey, one of these was one day late, and so we weren't, we couldn't even look at it? And so that way they know we were expecting some timely response.
Yeah, I actually followed up with all of the people who submitted information. So the person who was late, I let them know that, and I let the other folks know as well. And so I will do my best to emphasize in the way we write this, that they absolutely need to follow our instructions.
Now, is this, this through a program that people submit through, or do they submit directly? Because I've, I've bid on government contracts before, and every time that it was out of parameter, I couldn't even move forward in my bid process. So is, does this actually shut, does, or does this just come in to somebody at the city, and then we just shut it down when we receive?
It was the latter. Yeah, it came direct to us.
Okay. Councilman Burns?
I would agree with the council member, that the, it seems illogical to do it separately or to not do the non-union employees, because we do want to remain competitive. I have a hard time seeing logic in foregoing that. I do think the price is extremely high compared to what I would have ever guessed a study like this would cost. I get that when someone has a niche field, it just costs more to get them to do something. But I would love to see a lower cost for something like this. But the timeline, it does seem like we are really in a pinch to get this done, although I'd suggest we do it substantially earlier in the future. If we did push this out, if we said, okay, we want you to put another to bid, do you think, what, two, three weeks it would take for that to be completed? Is that right?
Yeah, the last time we put it out for about three weeks, as you can see from the response we got, it does take them a fair amount of work. That said, we have already received some responses. So we'll take a close look at the timeline. I mean, we might be able to shrink that to two weeks when we put it out. We'll do everything we can to reduce the amount of time. And it won't take us that long to rework our RFP, so that's good. So I'm thinking, you know, I mentioned four to six weeks. I'm going to aim for more like four rather than six. But it does take us time, then, when we get responses. We've got a committee that has to review them and score them. So we have to go through that process before we come back to you.
So realistically, we're looking at another month that we'd be putting you out?
Minimum.
And that's assuming that the people who respond will actually meet the deadline that we then set, which, we can't set a shorter deadline, I'm guessing, to get more responses. So it's just going to put you a month later where you're not able to get us a budget in a timely manner and things of that nature?
Yeah, yeah. And there's no going back, you know? If we see something higher than this, there's obviously, sure, it is what it is.
Yeah, and I guess that is the other possibility.
Absolutely.
Costing even more.
So it sounds like maybe you're ready for a vote. Does anybody want to make a motion?
One, one more thing to ask about that. So since we're sending the exact same packet out to the exact same people, do we think it would really take that long, since they've already reviewed it? And couldn't we put a statement in their stating that this is the same packet for a rebid? And if, I mean, if somebody sent something back to me for a recontract or rebid, I doubt I would bid higher. Maybe I could, and they, they could, but it could be a signal for them to go, okay, maybe that, maybe the ones they got were too high, and so we go a little lower. But should it shorten that timeline if we make that statement on there?
It should for those who are serious enough to respond. Yeah, like anything, they've already written it, essentially. It's not, I don't see it being exactly the same thing we put out before, because I did hear from council the desire to at least split the costs out for the two employee groups. So that, that might cause them a little bit of extra time, and I'd want to call attention to that. But that would be the only change I would see, other than the dates would shift.
Yeah, that, I would just like to see the, the cost for both split out, and then if somebody wanted to give a blanket deal for all, you know, to take the whole thing, fantastic. You know, obviously, we want to try to utilize everybody's time efficiently, but, you know, like, like it's been said up here a few different times, if we have more to choose from, and maybe those, maybe those other two were kind of in the same ballpark, and then the one is really high. You know, it's, a lot of jobs come in like that on bids, and you just, you just never know. And we are using taxpayers' dollars, so I really do think that we should be cautious of that. But I do agree that, you know, non-representative employees, as well as union employees, do need to be treated fairly. So I do see the value in, in, in that. So that's why I'd just like to see it separated.
Okay. So we're starting to repeat ourselves. So are we ready to move through a vote, or is there anything fresh or new that somebody wants to add?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if I can make the right motion. I would, my motion would be not to award this contract to this particular company, but send out new RFPs.
Okay. So if, so what I hear you saying, Councilman Allen, is that you would like to reject this current offer, or this current contract, and you would like for us to go out for new bids?
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Is there a second?
And that'll be separate, like Sarah was saying? That's how.
It would be, just to be crystal clear, it'd be helpful to amend his motion, just to make that clear.
Okay. So go out for a separate bid, or separate bids for the represented and non-represented employees?
If that were the motion, that would be.
Is that the emotion?
Crystal clear, but it's really up to the council.
All right, that's the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor of rejecting the certain, this, this particular contract and going out for new bids with separate, separate bids, one for the represented and one for the non-represented? Did I say that correctly?
Can I make, ask a question of that? Would it be possible to actually make it so we say, can you bid it separately? And would there be any price difference if it was done together? Because I could see companies bidding a little bit more for each job, like we have a baseline price plus the cost of each job.
So you want, want one? Yes, that's.
Yeah.
You want one, but you want them separated out?
One with separate line items, so that you know exactly what they're bidding on.
Okay.
Noted. You don't need to amend that.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So there we are. Okay. All right, that is it. The next meeting is April 13th, next, next Wednesday. And just as kind of a reminder, if you haven't already done it, be sure to fill out your F1 with the PDC. It's due by April 15th.
Madam Mayor, I had a question, because we were talking about the compensation. And I got a phone call from, it was a committee on finance of the salaries. I think it was voted on last year in order to come in. And the question that came about was, do you think that you guys would even want a raise or want an increase? I thought the question was odd in the fact that it was, they're creating a committee, or they were created a committee to evaluate the wages of different, or salaries of different council members of different cities. So the idea of the committee was to evaluate and to present something forward that the council no longer votes on, if I was to interpret that right? And the person mentioned like, hey, then we don't know if we put something in front of you to vote for, if you guys are going to go for it, or if you don't want it. It didn't make a whole lot of sense, rather than I thought the committee's objective was to, just like what we're talking about tonight, evaluate compensation packages for people and then present that forward. And so I was just curious.
Yeah, that's, well, it's a really good question. But I am out of it, because, yeah, so that is something, though, Debbie Burton is actually handling that. And that's a question that I think that we, that you can actually call Debbie, if you'd like to do that, have that conversation with her. But that would probably be good for her to know, and that maybe she can then clarify for the committee if what you're saying is true, if what you heard was correct. She could clarify for them, because as I understand it, we are not going to vote on that. Isn't that correct?
I believe, I believe they're.
Absolutely not. A salary commission.
Yeah, that was.
But it is not, you know, there could have been a miscommunication, because it's not uncommon for salary commissions to survey the electeds. And oftentimes, you'll see it like a blind survey, asking about how the electeds feel about their compensation. So that's not completely unheard of, if that was the intent of the conversation.
Okay.
But I, it's a great question for Debbie to find out why that call was made.
And they were very kind and very cordial. There was no challenges with the conversation. It was good, but it just struck me as odd that, that I would be getting a call about whether I wanted one or not, and if it was put before me, whether we would vote for it or not. And I thought it was just different than what we set them out to do.
Exactly.
Where that discussion's off the table. If it's across the board, we just get it. If it's not, then we don't.
Right.
And we're out of the picture.
Yep, that's exactly what it's supposed to be.
And I also got the same phone call, and I flat-out told them that I was glad that it was out of the council's hands, because I didn't think we should be in charge of our own salaries. So I hope that that message kind of got across.
Yeah, I agree with you. All right.[1775.98]